All right, we're going to call the board meeting. Do you have the Board of Education order? Please rise for the Board of Regents.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Stow, is there a second? That's Francis. All right, in a discussion on the meeting agenda, are all those in favor of approving the meeting agenda? Seven zero, Mr. Chair, is someone welcome? Six, I'm sorry, six zero. Megan is unfortunately sick and will not be here this evening. All right, so the first order of business is the board self-evaluation. First, let me thank all of the board members for completing it again. This is two years running, so we've had six years on the board. This is the first time, I think, we've done it back in my years, which is great. And Nick, you compiled them if you want in the office room.
Sure. I want to apologize, I had a time of doubt. I figured what your head cold, that's why I'm sitting way over here. I'm going to leave you over there. But I might just start having coughing and things. But I have my cough drops, so I'm ready to go. I don't think I'll finish a lot before we're done. So, um, yeah. What did Peter suggest? And I did find a copy of last year's. Unfortunately, the way you compiled them, the way we compiled them, were a little different. Because I was trying to make some comparisons to where you may have gone up or down. But I did a little work. Like, we might have a couple of things you can identify in some areas that you may want to talk about. The way I like to do these is have you look them over. If you haven't already, I would ask you to do that. Particularly read the comments, because those can be very helpful. There weren't a lot of them, but I thought they looked pretty good. And what I would ask you to do is, as you look at the results on the survey, try to look at things that either validate what you think or surprise you. You know, what are areas that, gee, I thought we were, I thought we would have identified this is much higher than it is. Wow, that's better than I thought it was. And if you look at the last two pages, it's not real scientific, but there's a couple of charts there for each of the categories. Vision, community leadership, board operations, ethics, and board superintendent team. It will at least give you an idea, in a gross fashion, where you rated yourselves. And remember, you did this. So this isn't a report card as much as your synopsis of how you feel you're doing. So I'd ask you to just take a couple of minutes, look at it, and then we can start talking about it, and people can jump in and say, see it. But look for things that stand out, either as this validates something that I think we're doing versus something that we won't, that maybe I'm really surprised at it. And then after we have general comments, we'll take it category by category and try to dig a little deeper. And I just want you, I want this to sort of trigger conversation that you will do. So, a couple of minutes. Well, why don't we get started? And those of you who are not quite done, you'll catch up. So I guess I'd start, overall, what are your impressions? Surprises, I heard both.
The comments surprised me, the scores not surprising at all. But a lot of it was a bit... No problem. You know, it's consistent with kind of how you look at teaching, right? This kind of distribution is we're above average, but we're not. What it says to me is, in all domains, we're above average, but we're not 100%. That's what's in takeaway. And that seems to be the consensus amongst superintendents. It was just the board, or was it just the...
The board.
Just the end of us, right?
Yeah.
But not much I doubt.
So what I, if you're aware, we had a difference in score. Where some people rated it really great, and some people not so great. So like number, you know, six and seven, they just seem to be such a wide range. We weren't all on the same page. Number eight is like that. And where we feel like we're doing very poorly was in board ethics. So I think that that needs to be an area of focus for us.
I identified the ones that received the lowest marks, and then I identified of those what I disagreed with and what I agreed with. So I'm only going to tell you what I disagreed with or what surprised me. The vision, mission, and goals are developed collaboratively with staff and the community. Definitely that happened with vision and mission. Absolutely, I was on that community task force. Strategic plan absolutely was developed with the community 100%. So that surprised me. And then the other one was, the board expresses the vision, the mission, the belief in high-quality instruction as the foundation for high achievement. I think we did that. I was really surprised by some of the ones on that.
Comments from anybody about that?
I'm sorry, which one? Which one was your second one?
I'm going to give you the number, okay?
So I know what number two of vision was.
One, two, three, five. Number five under vision.
And in fairness, you know, most of the board had a five or a four, but there were a couple people who don't agree. And I guess the question sometimes when there's a one low number is, is there an explanation that might help that person want to change their score? Or is there some deep-seated reason they felt that and what the board editor from hearing that?
Yeah, and the only reason I bring it up is I think that's the one shiny area that I think the board does exceptionally well. And so when I see that discrepancy, that's another question.
So it wasn't me, but I do know when I was looking at that, I was a little torn, because I sort of feel like we clearly believe it. I think we talk about it sort of to each other and when we're working. But in terms of expressing it sort of broadly, I don't know that we're always good at the messaging. And so that's sort of in that. In some of those, it was a little hard for me to figure out where in that range, you know, where do I, where do I put the emphasis in the question? You know, so I could see why someone, I could see how someone might, I don't know what their thoughts were, but I could see why someone might see it a little bit differently, depending on where their emphasis was in the question.
And that's why I like these to stimulate conversation. It isn't the score that's important as much as what you do with that information and how you share with each other.
Yeah, I'm actually the one who did this. I'm the two. And that's generally because I don't like these scales one to five without a description. I'm used to it meets. Because what happens is, it's like, I'm a hard grader. So I look at three as you're kind of meeting, you're kind of doing it.
Right.
I think other people may have thought, this is the problem with this kind of stuff. Is everyone rate teachers? If they're not a four, they think else somehow are bad. I don't do four. I do four as doing better.
Everybody should do three unless you do something exceptional.
Right.
Or really four.
Well, three, three to me was getting the job done.
Yeah.
So my point was, is that my scores tended to be more fours, threes, and twos, where I think other people may have been more five fours and threes. So I'm kind of the one to be the outlier. I, I, we talked about high-quality instruction, but I read the statement kind of literally. It expresses in mission, the belief in high-quality instruction is the foundation, right? So we, to us, it's important, and it's an important element. I focused on the word "the." So maybe that score, Jennifer, you were asking, you know, the score.
Okay.
It's not that we don't do it. It's that I, it's not what this statement, we don't, I don't think we do what this statement says. I think we think of it as an important ingredient among two, three, or four other things. And that's the question, you know? Because this was kind of an assertion made by Kay in this. Like, you guys provided that. If we agree with that as a board, that is the most important thing that maybe we should get more focused on. That's why, that's why I low scored it.
And not being defensive, but in defense, this survey has had numerous iterations, I'm sure. Going from, in fact, Peter, when you gave me the other one, you had averages on the end. And we used to do that, and I took it out, because to me, the spread is as important as the actual number. So, you know, we've changed that. We went from just yes, no, not sure, to four, then five scale. So it has had numerous iterations in an attempt to keep it real. But I get your, your point, yeah.
I would agree with, I think it would be nice to have words to help explain what you think one to two was like, right?
Next year.
Yeah.
The good news is, right, this is the second year of doing it. Last year, our score for conducting an effective self-evaluation was hovering at one. So we've gone up at least the fact that we're doing it. I mean, I think, Peter, you said it. None of this really surprises you. In many ways, it doesn't. We do a lot of things good. There are a few things we do well, and there are things we just need to keep improving on. I guess the one where I see we went down when I looked at last year's on the community leadership, that's the first one, board communicates and interprets the school division's vision, miss, you know, mission to the public. I think we got a lot of work to do there. I mean, I think with our strategic plan, we kind of put it up on the website and hope people would find it.
By the way, I'm not the number one.
There's opportunity. Oh, we, no, board ethics have never been, that's true. Yeah, we definitely went.
We had to have gone down to board ethics.
I haven't had a chance to do the averages.
So why don't we start with, why don't we start with vision and actually just sort of dig into each of the categories for a few minutes? Starting with the vision, we've talked a lot about it already, but is there anything else? I mean, there's been, in all the conversations I've had with you, there's a lot of emphasis on the strategic plan. So I think there's an understanding, at least at this table, the importance of it. I think what I'm reading here is that you might feel that there might be better ways of communicating that out and making sure that. And that'll sort of come into play with a little bit of what we're going to talk about tonight, the Lighthouse stuff. Why that could be important. So we'll get to that.
Yeah, and I was looking at the last item in the list, which is number seven. I was concerned at how many rated it a two. And I think the reason, and I'm hypothesizing, I don't know the answer, is the term continuous improvement. So I think we have the goals, they are aligned, but the continuous improvement from the board level of 20,000 feet, we're not sure it's happening. We're just not sure. It could be happening, but we don't know.
Also, remaining the highest priority is probably might factor in there too, because we've had so many like fire drills and unexpected issues to deal with. To have it consistently the top priority.
I think we also struggled as a group to set our goals, right? We've been through this exercise a couple of times during the course of the year. And, you know, I know it's a pain to do it, but I think the more we have that discussion, even if everybody doesn't agree, we start to kind of align and converge. And I think hopefully that will benefit us as we move forward. Maybe in the instance, it didn't feel real good, but we'll get that.
I need to, Peter, I need to address that. I didn't think we did district goals. I thought we only did board goals. Can you help me with that? I really even lost.
We did board goals, but it's, the board develops goals that align with the vision for the district, right? Our goals.
We didn't do that.
We did our goals, Jennifer.
Well, we didn't do district goals.
I agree with, I agree with Jennifer. And I want to connect it to something you said. And this is always a hard conversation for me, because I have this like, you know, strategic planning mindset. The vision, I rated this as, you use the word vision and strategic plan almost interchangeably? Okay. I don't agree with that at all. I think the board has done a decent, a good job of articulating the vision, okay? And we've sustained it. That's totally different than taking that vision, translating it into strategies, and then translating it into actions the management is taking and the administration is taking every day. I've always been concerned with our strategic plan that that alignment wasn't there. Because when that alignment isn't there, that's when organizations, it's a random walk whether they succeed or they don't. And to Ms. Dayton's point, it's one, everybody has their role to play in that. And I would have thought we would have said, here's the vision, we're agreeing what the strategies are, and then year to year, which is, I don't think we do this particularly well in this part, say, okay, here's the five things the board's got to get done to support that. Here's the five things the administration has got to get done to support that. And it's kind of like you have, this conversation breaks out. This conversation breaks out where the, well, we did the board goals, but the district goals, and they're supposed to flow. And if you're not deliberate about that, it, we need to be more deliberate about it. I think we do a great job on the vision. Translating that into strategy and action, that would not give us a high score. That's a place, that's a place of focus and improvement.
Good comments. You had your hand up for five of the...
You know, it's not all that anymore. But it's complicated, it's not a different matter. It's fine. Anyways.
Just sort of pure admiration. We as a, you're right, are we, are you right? We have not given, we have not done any work to develop goals for the superintendent, which is the representative of the administration. We haven't done that ever. Did I, did I say?
No, you didn't. We did not. We did not. We tried to have that discussion at the beginning of the year, it faltered, which is why we're trying to plan a retreat with Dr. Jones, so that when she starts, she's actually got goals.
But don't we already know what we need to do?
No, not as a, not as a group of eight. We haven't talked about it. That's why we need a retreat.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I thought we need a retreat, but I, it sounded like you're kind of waiting to ask her what she thinks she's...
No. Also, to have a, the board should have a discussion. She should be at the table. You should not be setting goals without the individual at the table.
I agree with that part, but we, we ought to know what the hell we're doing before we let her see the chaos of that discussion.
I think she's, she's been, she's been watching the chaos.
But it, it won't have...
Is there, you want to go back to this?
In her favor, though, I think observing how you have that conversation is going to help her learn a lot about how to work with the score.
Maybe, maybe not, yeah.
Yeah.
It can be helpful.
Yeah. Okay. Is that from a...
I'm asking for another day.
Yeah. So, so does that make sense? Because I hear what you're saying, you know, you're clear on the vision, you've got the portrait of the graduate. I think this is the work that needs to take place as you go through that sort of review of the strategic plan is. And you can be instrumental in helping this is keep drilling back to, how does this relate to our vision? I think that's what the work of the board has to be in part to, as we look at the new strategic plan or the revised strategic plan, how do we make sure that it aligns with the vision and our expectations? And when it doesn't, it's a challenging question now all of a sudden.
Isn't that what your committee's going to do? You and Peter?
Which? Which? What are you talking about?
There's a strategic plan, can we...
Yeah, but to, to your point, that kind of discussion, I view that as more facilitative. This kind of discussion, that has to be a very body experience. It's got to be...
Yeah, that's, that's what you were, we pointed, they were going to start.
Yeah, to figure out how to do it.
Yes, it is, right. Not to, not to draw the conclusion. No, no, not about to get a billing, right? Right.
Okay, so I see a couple of things in terms of trying to solidify some district goals or some priorities aligned with the vision, aligned with, well, you still have strategic plan. You're going to be doing it and improving it. If there's an existing one, so you want to make sure the work that's being done is consistent with that. And then as we, as you continue that process of developing the new plan or changing the plan to make sure it aligns with the vision. Does that cover the vision part of this well enough?
Somewhat, we have some concern about communication, right? That keeps coming up. So you go look at the comments.
Number six?
And it's, no, if you go look at the comments, that go with this section, somebody keeps bringing up promotion to the community, better package. This communications thread keeps coming up.
Well, that ties in that number eight, which I said we scored our four on last year.
Yeah, but were you, were you making this specific to vision and strategy? Or were you...
Well, I think the strategic plan and sort of, I mean, it's broad, but I also think if you look at our strategic plan, I mean, it's very long, and there's so much stuff in there. I think to try and get that to the community, to try and get that to teachers, try and get that to be sort of a unifying...
Word.
I, I think it's...
Big animal pictures.
I think, I mean, it's like, you know, when it's sort of spaced out, I mean, it's like, you know, they pick three words. I'm like, all right, maybe that's a little too small for us. But I mean, it's, it's like, there's way too much in there. I mean, for me to even try and explain what I think is in all those pages, and I know I've read it, it's like, wow, you know?
Could there be a half-page or a one-page summary, you know, executive summary, some sort of, some talking points?
But if you get to the next round, I think it's sort of thinking about how do we package this, at least some part of it, or some strategy, or some talking points, or something, that makes it easier to break up.
Well, this is a good segue to the community leadership part from the ancient. And again, an area where you were rough on yourselves, I think. But it's not uncommon. This is an area board's struggling with all the time. So you're not unusual in that. But what are your observations?
I think we were less hard on ourselves in community leadership than we were in vision. If you look at the county votes scores.
Which one do you want? Which one do you want?
Leadership.
Community leadership, the second category down on the first page. Well, in areas of collaboration, for instance, eleven and twelve, you know, it's, we collaborate with other agencies, et cetera. You either do it or you don't. And I, and I got the impression that that's a more finite type of thing, whereas some of the other ones where you gave yourself threes and twos, you know, in terms of advocacy, I mean, Jennifer is out there all the time. Does, is that enough to give the board credit for that? Or does she get all the credit for that?
No, no. I actually think we were, I'm going to hypothesize that we were all thinking more locally. And we don't have a one-pager dashboard on our strategic plan. I don't know wherever you want to call this from. Where you go out to the neighborhood associations and you say, okay, this year, this is how we do. We did really well in this area. We're going to improve in this area. We don't have that. And I don't want to call it a scorecard, but I want to call it like a...
Recap for it.
Yeah. A one-page communication device that we can use in neighborhoods.
Thank you. Can I just speak?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, I'll lose my train of thought again. I mean, I think communication is always hard, because you never know, right, how well the community's receiving it. And so we're hopeful, we put out a lot of information, but, you know, then you talk to people in the community, and they're like, oh, I didn't know that, we didn't hear that. But further to your point, Jennifer, when we do all of those RTM meetings, when we go to sell our budget, I find that we are, it's awesome, right? Because we really engage with everyone. We get our message out there. We're all pretty much on the same page. We deliver the provided information ahead of time. And maybe, I mean, I hate to make us do more of that, but perhaps that is the right approach. Because unless you get in front of people and not really listen, you can send out a lot of emails.
Oh, no, I wasn't kidding.
No, no, I'm not saying that. No, I'm just saying, like, unless that's maybe on, maybe that's the solution, or not the solution, sorry, the incremental improvement, is for us to actually get out there a little bit more individually, and we could sort of divide that up.
Well, you know, one of the challenges is most people think of communications as we got to give them more stuff. But we have to find another way of giving them the same information, but in a way that they will get it.
Right.
And that's not the word communication, that's public relations. Communication is finding venues for feedback and conversation.
Right.
And that's different, and it's harder. Because, you know, what kind of venue do you generate that allows you to get out in the community and have new conversations with people? Like, you know, I was in region seven last night, and they do some community conversations. Now, they don't do the formal process, you know, the trademark community conversation stuff, but they pick areas in town and within their towns, because it's a regional district, and they have the superintendent and the board, a couple of board members, and maybe an administrator meet with a group of community members. And they talk, and they usually, in fact, after last night, they're going to pick a topic and say, you know, tonight we're going to talk about individualized instruction, for example, or, you know, changing grade configurations or something. But to get people energized to talk about a specific thing and then learn from each other. And those are, to me, where boards haven't necessarily accepted the challenge as much, because it's harder. But that's real communication to me. The other stuff, you know, you can use more social media. You can use a newsletter. You can, some actually have, you know, on the cable TV. I know our district superintendent or chair had one hour of TV show before every board meeting. And they would have a guest or a topic, and it would, well, it worked for them. But they would invite maybe a teacher who'd just gotten an award or something, and they'd talk about the program, or they'd talk about the curriculum.
Oh, God. I'm waiting for the Bob Horton comment on this one. Although, we all want to hear that, because that comedian does that. They were like, turn.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't, I gave us okay scores here. I mean, it was great scores. Because I, to your point, I think people are confusing. And I look at this board ones. I'm not talking about what individual schools do every day, because that's not what you're asking us to evaluate. I think you were asking us to evaluate that. It's maybe kind of a question.
Yeah?
You were saying the board.
Well, this is the board, but...
The organization.
Part of what I think could include your leadership is, have you supported the system that allows that to take place?
Well, that part we've done, yeah. But the thing that I observe, which is why you give us, I didn't think we do great jobs. give us, I didn't think we do a great job, because I think we have two things we need to work on. One is, we suffer from, I think we suffer a little bit from the echo chamber thing, we tend to talk to groups of people who will feed back to us what we want to hear, right? Which is, so, I don't think we do enough outreach to the groups that are not in our little core universe. The second thing is, I, communication to the point is, I'm much more interested in not the person who's going to tell me I'm doing a great job, I'm much more interested in hearing from the person who may have a view that I'm not doing a great job, either because they genuinely are correct or not doing a great job, or they're just not informed. It could be either of those reasons.
Right.
But I think as a board, we, I'm not comfortable the way we talk to people who don't necessarily understand us or show a view. I mean, and for me, this was a post good job. We're in year four of our strategic plan, and we've never, I mean, with us, come to use, we've never published our scorecard publicly. If, if, you can't even talk about, you know, we're doing great if you're faced with just something as basic as that. And so that was why I scored it this way. I know there are some people, a lot of colleagues here, who heard it said a lot, and I don't, you know, they, there's this approach that says, we're doing great, we just do a lousy job of telling people. I worry about that thinking.
Well, I, one thing I want to bring up, and I don't know if I've mentioned this before here or not, but when we talk about communicating with the public, the numbers could be slightly off, but within school districts, there's often, you know, ten percent of the people in the community are going to love anything you do, they're pro schools, they, they'll be there for you no matter what, ten percent are never going to support you, no matter what, and maybe it's twelve, maybe it's eighteen, maybe it's five, but it's the eighty percent in the middle that have really no vested interest or that no position, that, you know, they're assuming things are going along because they don't hear much, but this is the group that you really want to reach, because these, in fact, you can look to this ten percent, how can they become ambassadors for us, how can we utilize their energy and their enthusiasm to help reach some of the eighty percent? But this is our target audience, these are the people we want to reach, but where do we spend most of our energy? In most districts, we really focus on this, we aim, we, it's always response, it's usually shooting from the hip, we're trying to disenfranchise this group, and in the absence of a response, they will influence some of the eighty percent, but I think this is where a lot of districts fall down, we don't spend our time reaching the people who have no position or are flexible in their, you know, they can be convinced either way, but they're not dead set. So I think as we think about communication with people, that's the group you're trying to get to, that's the group that can be influenced. Now, I want to make sure we hear from other people that haven't been talking, because I want you off.
I think I just wanted to say to the board that on eleven and twelve here, we collaborate with multiple agencies.
Yeah.
Daily.
Right.
So I think you guys will hold yourself on the scores, because we're meeting with people, first, and why, why I'm saying, boys and girls, we are collaborating with community agencies every day.
But you're not the board, right?
Yeah, but I represent the board with the, with those agencies.
I gave us a decent score here, but I tried to read the, how are we supposed to answer this?
Well, I don't, I think your point earlier, if we're doing a solid three, it means we're doing the job, if we use that as a measure, you're doing the job. Now, could there be better sharing of what those collaborations our support members understand it better, because, you know, you're the ones that were not doing it, and yet you are, it might just be that you need to be better informed of some of the things that are taking place in the district, so, oh, yeah, we are doing that, you know, through our.
I asked for this because Jennifer Dayton is complaining, the only person on the board is carrying this load.
Yeah, yeah. Someone else is.
Nobody else is really doing it, right?
That's a.
She's carrying a full load for the board.
Soon it will be a different situation because I'm rolling off, so that problem will get fixed.
I mean, once I was getting.
Was that the comment?
Of course, it was a problem, I mean, my point is, is that we're doing it, but it's only because you're doing it.
Yeah, I couldn't figure that out, no.
But the other thing too is that.
I think for her to work in upon.
Of course, of course.
But I meet with the superintendents monthly.
I know you do.
I wasn't counting you, I mean, I was, I thought that's what your question was, which is, are we supposed to be talking about us or you or us? Are we talking about the broader board of education in terms of communicating with these things?
Yes.
I took it as a party of us, that sort of.
Yeah, the answer is yes, it's really kind of both, part of it is, what can you as individual board members do to enhance that, and I think that suits some kind of communications planning versus we're all volunteer to do something that's kind of hazardous. If we, and I'm trying to feed this a little bit, one of the modules in White House that we, in fact, I did that in region seven last night, is the module on community engagement, community leadership, where we talk about those things, what does, what can the board do strategically to invest itself in better communication, but it's also what conditions can you create within this, within the district to allow that communication to take place systemically? So it might be the superintendent, it might be the board principal, might be the communications person, but the messaging is set kind of by the board, that, you know, it's a single unified message, because the board has sort of a handle on that. So to me, that's where everybody gets involved, but the board still has to accept some leadership in that, we want to make sure that we have a consistent message going out to the community. Shall we move on to the next one, board operations? Your comments are just a couple of them.
Oh, oh, sorry, someone else should talk, but I have a comment later. If anyone else wants to talk, they're welcome. Okay, number eighteen, I'm really shocked by, because I thought this was the first year we really focused on board professional development, I mean, we really did change our meeting schedule to accommodate it, so I don't, I don't get it.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
Most of us said, yeah, we like it, though.
The board provides appropriate support programs and initiatives consistent. Am I reading the wrong thing?
Oh. Support, including professional development for programs and initiatives consistent with the vision.
I don't think that was part of.
Yeah, that's not board professional development.
I was thinking about it as.
Do we support the programs and the initiatives consistent with the vision and the mission?
Right, that's more about your decisions regarding the district versus the board professional development.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's my mistake then.
Twenty-one would get to the one you were talking about.
Okay, yeah.
And we did try to do a lot of professional development, this year, it's next year.
Right, where we're cutting the budget, but we're still doing quality professional development. I want to give a shout out on thirteen to the policy governance committee, because obviously, a lot of work has gone in in the past year or two, changing over the policies, starting Barbara, I think, on.
Wait, so I'm giving a five, you two, because I'm.
I don't, I don't think I gave a five, I don't have to go a five.
Oh, no, I don't think I did either.
I gave you a four.
I, I gave a four, because I'm not sure, like, we're approving all these policies, but like, I don't know where to look, like, we're still in this combo mode, so it's like, it's confusing to me.
Yes, I agree, so I gave myself a five, I gave a five.
Well, as a, as a former member of the committee, I gave you a five, because I know how much work is going into it.
Oh, that's awesome, thank you.
Well, you know, when I get an evaluation, if I get a four, I don't feel bad.
No.
No, you should feel good about that.
Exactly.
You should feel good about that.
To me, that's a very strong score. So it, within that area, and in general, like I said, most of the, most of the categories are threes or higher, fourteen looks like the one that's the biggest challenge.
Which we've identified as part of our goals, as something we need to work on for next year.
Right.
PGC is working on the committee schedule, I hope Eton sent a document to board that then, it's, it's something we're looking to change.
Sure.
And frankly, that helps, we were effective, more than efficient.
Right, we, well, so we're spending, our meetings are shorter, we're still, I think the concern is generally, are we focusing on the right things in the way we need to focus on?
I don't think they're sure.
I'm not sure. Oh, come on, we used to get past midnight and one AM.
Oh, yeah, they're shorter. Okay, we can ask them in Kentucky average.
Yeah. Michael's going to undertake a project to go find.
We expect them to be short, flatter, they never, like, we spend so much time on something that's supposed to be insubstantial, you know?
Right, okay, so I.
We were shorter at the beginning of the year. Don't you hate that when you look at the agenda, oh, we should be out of there by eight thirty, nine o'clock, and then you get there at nine?
Usually, they used to assign times on the agenda, right? But we, we passed them, so that might not.
I'm a big fan of that, I respect that tool.
No, we have to not to bring it back.
I like it.
Yeah.
It's almost like impact, right? So we, we're not getting to spend more time on the things that have a broader impact, so I would almost instead of time, create a little impact, like, if you had to prioritize how you were going to spend your time tonight, not on this thing.
Right.
Just because it's first, doesn't mean it gets the most time.
Right.
But I also think that we need to make sure that the topics that we address are based on policy, that we're not taking up stuff that is not policy-driven, and so that really belongs in the administrative world.
There's a lot, a lot of people that like to use this kind of chart where it is four quadrants, urgent, not urgent, important, not important, and where do we spend our time? And if we have limited amount of time, obviously we'll have to spend, this is where you get into strategic thinking, you know, it's, it's not urgent and it's important versus when we spend our time on the urgent stuff or some kind of stuff that may not be as important, but for some reason we're, we like it. So that's something that you can keep doing. I did like the, the comment about effective rather than efficient, because I'll take effective every day of the week, even if it means a little longer, as long as we're making decisions that are helping kids, and longer, it looks good.
Right.
So the one area that seemed to indicate a concern, you are already working on, so let's see what happens for next year.
Which, which one?
That was.
Number fourteen.
Fourteen.
Effective meetings.
Sort of, we're working on thorough policy, agenda line.
Yep. I was the low score person on fifteen of those, because I think we convince ourselves we're looking at data, so we're doing analysis, analysis is totally different than data. Those two things get mixed up, I, I don't think we were good at that, but other people seem to think we're good, I did well. I don't mix up data with insight.
So Peter, I understand your point, but I guess some of it is, we aren't asking the administration to just give us raw data, we're also asking them to do the analysis, and I think we've been pushing for the past several years at least, for a better platform on the analysis that they're doing, I don't know.
Yeah, but I think at the same time, where that barber was always, was always good about this of, you know, trying to format these reports and saying, if you're going to make the assertion, you need to see the data, and what's interesting to me is when we look at data, like, we used to spend a lot more time looking at student achievement data, we've died with that way back. Just when we have data, like, my experience with this stuff is good analysis is, the data's the data, do the analysis, what does it tell you? Don't go the other way, which is, I already know what the answer is, and I'm looking for data to validate, but I'm, we're big on validating, looking for the piece of data that validates a point of view that I already have or would like to have. And it's not uncommon, I, you know, it's referred to called fact shopping, but if we were going to, I would say giving improvement would be, because really, what you want to do is get data, derive insight, take the insight as it is, and then talk about what are you going to do about it.
Exactly.
You have to move down that chain, and if you don't, if the board doesn't effectively as a group of eight, move down that chain, you just get to this end part where everybody gets up out of the room and they heard the little part they wanted to hear, but then there was no consensus for action.
We can't ask for data and then look at it and not then take some action on it, because, and we have an awful lot of data dives coming up next year, and if we don't decide ahead of time that we are going to take some action when we see the data, then don't bother asking for that.
I think Peter Drucker talked about data, you know, sort of random bits of information, random bits of something that when there's meaning to it, it becomes information, and then when we take that information and actually are able to use it to make decisions, that becomes wisdom, that is, you know, wisdom's where we want to be. And then I went a step further and said, well, we can look at that information or that, that wisdom and figure out what we want to do next, that's vision, but the, the big one for decision-making really should be that wisdom, so what data do we need and how do we, to Peter's point, how do we get an interpretation of that data that has significance to us? One of the things we talked about the last White House session, which I can't remember how far back that was, but we talked about that five column organizer with those questions, what, what's this going to look like if it's done well? So we start when we're making the decision, asking, how will we know if this is successful? And then secondly, how are you going to tell us? You know, we want to know that upfront, so we're not waiting till two, three years later and then getting a report based on what we'd like you to think about the data, but rather, we told you this is what we were going to do, this is how it was going to look if we did it with fidelity, and now we're reporting how close we did to that. And I think if you can get in the cycle of that, gets better, into better use of data to support your decisions. So that's a, a change over time that has to take place in order for data to really have some significance, if that makes sense. Let's jump into board ethics, because that seemed to be the one that you rated yourselves maybe a little more stringently. I'd like to get your feedback on that. I mean, those, some rated it high, some rated it averaging, but there were some significant numbers on the, in the one column, too. Jennifer?
I don't, I don't know that we have a code of ethics in number twenty-three, I don't know that we have a written code of ethics. I'm asking, do we have a written code of ethics?
We have it, we have something in our policy.
I'm serious.
Yeah, we do. Okay, are we, I assume we're taking the K of code of ethics then, right?
I, I'm not a hundred percent sure of labeled as code of ethics, but I do think there's a policy that refers to ethics, and there's a few different policies on specific issues related to that.
Well, I think that would be helpful, I don't think the board has gotten to review that yet, I could be wrong, but, oh, did we see that one?
That would be like one of the first.
It's like what we're worrying about, you certify something every year, this is probably one of those things that.
Oh, that's the town form, right, but, but I'm just saying.
That's about conflicts of interest.
Yeah, but this should go along with it, like, you know, it's a reminder, and this is our, not a wine and done when you become a board member.
I think the fact that Jennifer had asked a question and nobody's really definitive, I think, kind of says that even if you have it, you don't really have it.
Well, I think we have it, and it was partly in a big packet of policies from K that we've sort of moved along.
So this reminded me of the same issue we had, what, three years ago, about professional ethics with staff, and we then said that the staff had to be reminded every year, one way or the other, about that, and I see didn't know you so much, should it be for the board as well?
There are some boards, the first meeting in September, beginning of school year, they'll just read it, and for, send them out, and some boards will actually sign them once a year, this is kind of an official way of acknowledging it.
And that test issue.
Let's do that.
I think, I think Jennifer's right, though, Gaton, or whatever, I don't know which one he was in charge when that thing came through, but I think it just came through in a big package.
Oh, yeah.
So it's like, my issue is.
That wasn't the time to sit and, you know, it's not the time to approve the general concept, so now, come next year, first meeting, we ought to do that, if that took the board at the reason, do we have to make a motion or whatever?
It's the, it's nine two seven one, the title of it is code of ethics, if you look at it below, it's also titled I laws of the board.
That's the new.
I'm over adding that to the agenda, it can be the first item.
Okay, cool.
For the keeper of the agenda.
That's you.
So is that what we're going to spend our time talking about on the ethics side? Because there were some.
No, there's way more.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a couple of things that were sort of strong when you felt it.
Well, I'll, yeah, I mean, I've, I've set out a few corporate boards and.
Well, I'll, yeah, I mean, I've sat out of a few corporate boards, and I come from a world of M and A, and so confidentiality is a really paramount to me, and I make sure that things generally don't leak, and I've been surprised by how some things have leaked earlier than I would have liked, and that's been disappointing, because I've never had that experience. So this was definitely where I rated us as a group the hardest.
I agree with that, and I had the opportunity to hear the state's chief ethics officer, and the crux of her remarks was, you can do anything, you, there are a lot of bad things you can do, but the worst thing you can do is to breach confidentiality, because then you lose trust. She's, you know, there are all kinds of minor financial interactions that can happen, but the one that really matters in interpersonal relations is the confidentiality.
And yet, there are very few penalties for violating that. Seth, I mean, in terms of ethical thing.
Well, I need a risk.
Oh, yes, and even on the board level, you know, on the board level, you don't have a lot of authority as board to discipline someone if they're violating that principle. Although, and I got this from Tom Mooney, and he's as good an expert as anybody, if a board member's lapse of confidentiality damages something at the board level, the board can sue that person, which I thought kind of, and he said that I'd love to take that case, because if the board can prove that that person's violation of confidentiality caused harm to the board, then the board can take action. As far as I know, it hasn't happened, and that's why I say we'd love to see that as a testimony. But, you know, it is.
Make his career.
And, you know, there are, I mean, you can censure, but censure is very limited in what the value of that is. You can't, the board member stays at the table, can still raise their hand and speak if called on, they still vote, I mean, there's no real penalty to that. Although the only place, and Kate's been strong about not recommending censure as an activity, but there are times, for example, if that person's behavior does cause a legal challenge to the board, let's say you do violate confidentiality, talk about a teacher, for example, and when you learn in the executive session, that teacher sues the board, the board, in an attempt to distance itself from that conduct, could censure the board member, so at least they're on record saying, we did not condone that, and in fact, we censured the board member because we believe that is reprehensible behavior, you still probably get named in the suit, but at least that's part of the defense, and say, no, the board didn't condone that behavior, it's not part of the official action of the board, et cetera. That gets into some complicated areas, but to Jennifer's point, once you lose trust, it really doesn't matter. And I've actually seen boards that, as a group, will say to the superintendent, don't tell us anything anymore, because we would prefer not knowing, you know, obviously tell us what we have to, but in terms of confidentiality, if it's not absolutely necessary, don't tell us, because the opportunity for someone spreading that out there is more harmful than us not knowing. And that's a very serious thing to avoid, and I hope it never gets like that here. But it is something, without trust, it's really hard to.
But the ones you're talking about there, that's like a good example of an HR situation. Maybe I'm asleep over here, because I don't check my email, my board emails frequently as I should, but I'm not, I'm not aware of an HR situation that leaked.
Why, is there, is there one?
Ralph, was it one this year?
Why didn't hear HR bench?
No, but you were talking about that, that's when the board's in receipt of confidential information, or in a situation where, I think our board's been remarkably good, maybe it's some of us have lived, we lived through a really tough situation where a teacher wound up having escalating all the way through to the board, we had actually adjudicated after there was a hearing, we've never been through that, I've been here a long time, we've never been through that before. And I thought, actually, well, everybody else was here, six of us were here, I thought we did a really good job with that, you know, we took it as it was supposed to be handled, we didn't take in, we told people in the public, you know, hey, I can't talk about that because I'm a judge for this thing, please don't talk to me about it. I think that, so I'm, I'm trying to think of where this is broken down.
I think one of the questions you're asking about the purpose of censure, and there has been this, you know, I think, I thought about it in terms of, do you censure someone to sort of publicly state that's not acceptable behavior, even if it was not necessarily damaging to the extent of an HR situation? But in some ways, to sort of say publicly, this was not acceptable behavior, and whether this particular case was of that extreme nature in terms of making this vulnerable or not, do you do that? But again, the censure seems to have so little effectiveness that you sort of feel like, is that where we want to spend our time? Is that sort of how you want to, you know, create another argument? Is that really going to help us?
Well, I, in fairness, I don't want to mention the HR situation as an example.
Oh, okay.
So, no, 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 but that's some of the ones that can be the most egregious and cause the most trouble, that's why I use that as an example. But it could be just somebody's constantly berating people at the board table, or starting fights, or it could be almost anything.
Other executive session information that's not necessarily an HR issue, but it's still from an executive session.
Absolutely, absolutely. The fact is, confidentiality means confidentiality means confidentiality with no gray areas, you know, and that's why a lot of boards, for instance, the documents that are used in an executive session before we leave, everybody hands them back in, so there is a necessary copy out there to get shared with somebody. Or in one case, a board was doing a superintendent evaluation, they hadn't reached a decision that night, so they just had to draft, and the superintendent read the draft in the Hartford Current the next morning, because somebody literally faxed a copy to the Hartford Current, and it hadn't even been voted on. Now, they knew who it was, and he threatened to sue that board member, and it got really ugly, because.
I find our problem is the reverse. When last superintendent came in, she kind of changed practice. It used to be, if there was something coming, the board knew. We've seemingly fallen into the pattern that she established, which is, we find out about the same time the public finds out. Now, personally, that doesn't really bother me, but, because I'm not sitting here looking at my board email all day, so Alan Friedland almost said, hey, did you hear about one? What are you talking about? I have no idea what they're talking about. But I think the way, and I think Ralph has continued this, and it seems to work okay. That's up to the board, the board member has to be the one that's on top of it, but there's none of this, to the situation you were talking about, we don't find out stuff, like the current, now we don't find out stuff well in advance, so unless somebody's sitting around doing it, I don't know who the hell, if they wanted to leak, could even leak, because we're finding out the same time the public's finding out.
Sometimes when you have that retreat with the new superintendent, that's one of the conversations you want to have. What's a suitable process for notification? Do we just tell the board chair, or start with the board chair and then talk to the chair and say, you know what, maybe we should share this part with the board, so at least it's not a total surprise, but, you know, everyone understanding, we're not going to get all the information, because it's got to be kept confidential, et cetera, et cetera. But I think that's a legitimate conversation to have with the new superintendent coming in, let's come up with a process that works for all of us.
And I've taken the practice issue, Ralph will verify it. Anytime he's told me something, I say, you need to alert the board now, because if you raised it to me, everybody needs to know.
I mean, that used to be the rule, you don't want to read about it in the newspaper. I mean, that's kind of the unwritten rule, almost a written rule, that, and of course, with social media, it's harder, because, and that's us that bet it, at least a newspaper does an assumption to some level, that somebody's betting that information before it's printed, whereas, social media, it could be anything, and that's one, that's a whole other conversation, I don't want to sidetrack you into that. The only other one, in terms of internal or external conflicts, again, you were fairly harsh on yourselves. Anybody want to comment on that?
This is number twenty-six, just questioning.
Twenty-seven.
Well, one was about politics.
Well, that too, so there's the twenty-six and twenty-seven, frankly.
And was politics like political politics, or?
This was one of those, I'm going to do the interpretation.
Or was it like the op-edo and like that type of politics?
Well, politics doesn't necessarily have to be R slash D, but the idea that there's, I don't want factions, or there's certain, certain decisions are being made for reasons other than the matter at hand, I don't know how to say that any politically correct.
So you mean like external influence over our decisions?
It could be, it could be, or just, you know, there's a group of people that feel a certain way, and it can be along party lines, but it certainly doesn't have to be. But I guess my question back to you would be, how do you interpret that? Because you're, you know, you all.
I interpreted does the board, do the, all eight members of the board operate in non-political way amongst themselves? That was how I interpreted that question. I didn't make it any, any broader than that. Do they get motivated? Do they just deal honestly and openly and in a personal communicative way? Or do they allow other things to get in the way of decision-making? And that's what I, and that's how I interpreted the question, and I did not give us a great score for that.
Well, half of you didn't give yourselves a great score, and I guess I'd like to hear from you why you might have done that.
I have, I'm trying to remember what I even scored about. I didn't think it meant political, like R and D, but I do think that there's probably, I don't want to say pet projects, or, you know, just ideas and agenda, and sometimes hard to move people off, you know, their focus, and look broader at more information or how other people are thinking.
Good observation.
I'm sure that happens in every board, so what is the solution? There must be a process solution there.
Well, I think the structural solution for that is that you have a clear set of goals, and you focus the attention of the board related to those goals. And if it doesn't align with the, so if I have an individual agenda item that I, you know, example, I remember one board member who wanted middle school soccer, because at the time, our district didn't have it, and during budget time, unfortunately, it got cut, and he goes, well, that's the only reason I agreed to run for the board, and not a lot, and so we're like, well, we'll miss you.
Yeah, he shouldn't have run then.
Because that was his only focus, and the rest of the board had the bigger picture of, that was here, we had a 10% budget cut, we cut everything, and so we weren't going to add something new. And, but the rest of the board went back to, we're in crisis mode, this is not a crisis item, but the better solution would have been, does this align with our goals? Is there a goal that we can even use to say, okay, I want this particular program, here's how it relates to our goals, at least if I can't convince you, then it shouldn't get passed, and we don't do a goal setting by, well, that's your goal, that's your goal, that's your goal, it's what the collective board together says, these are our goals, so we have to have a majority vote on what our goals are, not everybody gets a goal. Did that help answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I guess I'm just ask, is there any way the board could see doing some kind of work to improve this area?
Don't we think it flows out of setting those district goals? I mean, that seems like the starting point.
I think, yes, I would say that's a really good way of, and then holding yourselves accountable to that, if somebody comes up with something, ask you that question, how does that relate to our goals? And if they can't make that jump, then that helps to answer that question. Yeah, good. All right, let's talk about the board superintendent team for a minute.
Is there an action? Because that's the one we set the goals.
Well, I think the, what I'm hearing is that as the board works on establishing goals, it's got to be that, at least in terms of the agenda part of it, individual agendas, that the board's going to insist that whatever the board considers is aligned to goals. So that gets back to the work the board needs to do on setting goals. Now, I'm open, I hope you are open to other suggestions, if there are any, that was the first one that popped up.
I have nothing to say on this, but it just, it strikes me as, we're like, I don't know, it doesn't feel like we're really having this conversation.
Well, let me, let me ask a question, though, because one of the other things you said you were going to do was focus more on the code of ethics, and is there a way of aligning that work with the code of ethics to make some sort of commitment to improving? Because I believe within that code of ethics, there are comments about politicizing decisions and/or the way we interact with each other.
What's in the code of ethics? Is that, is that there?
It's in the policy, it's in your policy.
Yeah.
No, no, I know it's in the policy, but what does the code of ethics talk about?
Successive, every school system depends on an effective working relationship between the board and super, could be corporate standards, board members and supers ensure the opportunity for high-quality education for a student and wellbeing.
Yeah, it's good, it's comprehensive.
Staunch advocates of high-quality, free public education.
Wow, I didn't know we had that.
On and all national, state and local laws.
Part of it, oh, look.
Organized, clear, and appropriate communications are key. Carry out respective roles with the highest level of professionalism, honesty, and integrity. Board members, as they represent the entire community, must ensure that community remains fully informed, and on and on and on.
That's a motherhood apple pie there.
Yeah.
And yet, we can't.
Having the code of ethics isn't the thing that's going to make you better, it's finding a way of aligning what you do to that. And back empowering your chair, when he observes during meetings, somebody is violating the code of ethics, he could declare that person out of order, or any of you could call out an order and say, according to our code of ethics, we don't do this, someone's doing it, could you please stop? So, I mean, there are ways of strategizing that, once you've really reestablished that as an important norm. You know, you could also just do meeting norms as part of that process, to say, you know, in our meetings, you know, cell phones off, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That could be a whole other meeting, and tie this up, yes. Any last comments on ethics? Because to Peter's case, you're right, it was the most, the lowest score of all, and we want to make sure that there's some attention to it. Okay, now, board superintendent team, and I know there were a couple of comments, which I think brought to diet some of the conversation, is how do you maintain a superintendent for a significant length of time? You know, how do you build some longevity with that? But your comments, your observations, you had a couple that were scored high.
I think twenty-nine, because I don't, I don't feel like we do that to discuss how we're relating to one another.
I mark it as not sure.
Just case, case in point, so we did our superintendent evaluation, and I wanted to go back and see, what have we done before? So just searching in our Board Dogs tool, we used to do quarterly evaluations at one point, way back, and we moved off of that. And maybe we need to look at that. Right, exactly, but now if we do it at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, you know, we're lucky if we get that done, so.
I find that it's really hard to pull people together for scheduling.
But if you don't make some action, some motions about even this whole discussion tonight, it'll be just another evaluation if it's shut off, and say we do that.
Can you talk about the super evaluation?
Well, I'm talking about this, I'm talking about anything, you know, if you don't have some action, which is why I didn't like the board goals to begin with, but I love that battle, so, the thing is that if you don't have an action to go with it, then this is just a long discussion.
Well, that's true, Jeff, I mean, you were here, right, we did that, but you reached out to everybody, and I got your note as an example, I think everybody else got your note. I think.
Glad I didn't go there, but just the fact that we don't make action.
The important part of it, the important part of it was Barbara, is how seriously do we take that? Is that thing actually just an action we're checking the box on?
Right.
Or is it one where we're never going to approve goals? And goals, to me, seems to be the opportunity to get alignment. So if we look at it as an item to get done, because it's on the agenda, I would rather treat that as, not that you contemplate enable forever, you say, I'm not going to, this is my opportunity to get eight people lined up, so I'm not going to approve goals or push forward goals until all. So I'm not going to approve goals or push forward goals until all eight people are aligned. And you can't let it go on forever. But the same is true with any goals we give to superintendent. It can't be, you know, there's, there's the get it done. And there's certain things that get them done. Then there's other things that are like really worth not turning in until they're well done. Because they matter to the organization.
You want us to affect the culture, not just actions.
And get alignment.
Yeah.
I think I put in so, logic, should we do minutes? I was told to make it as minutes because I didn't want to start a meeting through email. But I think we did for board goals. I think we had it scheduled for four touchpoints during the year. Or three or four touchpoints. So that, you know, we're talking about what's our, yeah. In September, especially because we did earlier, what's sort of the action plan? So what are we actually planning to do with these goals? How are we going to carry them out? Then there's a January update, then there's a May pattern review. Start thinking about, okay, what do we want to do for the next year? And then the June vote. So there are four times during the year where we would be talking about that to make this robust, to make it, sort of like we've talked about this G T plan, to make this something that we're actually doing, not just sort of setting.
Living.
Right, yeah. And hopefully as we do this, because I don't think we've done it, you know, really in a while, it'll again form us as we go next round to hopefully be better at creating our goals. So living them, trying to function with them, and then reviewing them and creating the new ones. Hopefully next round we'll do it though.
So Barbara raises an interesting point though. And that is that, and, and here's the challenge I'm going to put to you. Because we've been watching the clock because we still wanted to talk about Lighthouse tonight a little bit.
Yes.
But I'm wondering if there's more value in finishing this and then looking to what are action steps that can be done to get something out of this evaluation? I hate to put off something else again, but
I have one comment.
We're, we're having a rich conversation. How do we value from that?
So I haven't taken notes. But I'll tell you what my opposite concern is. As I'm having, okay, add code of ethics to the September agenda. Board super relations, do we want to make this an agenda? Do we tie that into the related goals? Well, this is a little different, but spend more time, you know, to the uncommitted 80%. Get information in terms of what the superintendent is doing in terms of reaching out and communicating. So I have a bunch of things on here, but I'll tell you, one of the things that worries me and another plug for reading those minutes is, you know, we have so much stuff on our agenda as it is. And the problem is a lot of times we keep adding stuff. And we're not taking anything away. And then I find that at the end of doing, when we have agenda items, everybody says their piece. But I have somewhere in here, I think I said this, you know, we don't come to a consensus. So there was one question here that talked about, you know, are we sort of inappropriately, sort of individually trying to influence the superintendent? I don't think that happens. But I think what we don't do is actually finish conversations, come to a consensus and say, this is what we as a board, as a group, are now directing the superintendent to do. It's kind of like, I got my little throw in, I got my throw in. And we sort of think they're going to follow along with that. Except that there was no sense of it actually being said.
And we never made a motion to tell them to do that.
Right, remember you taught, you taught us at some point that we're not supposed to direct the superintendent to anything without a vote. Like we're supposed to say, hey, go up and do this. We're supposed to like go up.
But this is, this is, this is why I feel like I just, I'm really a little too old at this. Is, uh, this is why this thing with agendas with timing. Okay? You can do that if people are really disciplined and they work closely as a team. I'm gonna, we, we don't, okay? So what I found in agendas is, don't do that. Because what, the result is, what we do is you do this faux thing that doesn't impact the organization. Topic, come on. Everybody says their piece. And it, the topic never gets run to ground. So one of two things happen. It either has to come back. All right? Or it's like, nothing came out of it. We had this discussion, everybody thought, they heard what they wanted to hear. And to Barbara's point, there was no, okay, wait a second. We all agree that the eight of us, this is what, it's the takeaway. And the remedy that I saw to that was, okay, until the board figures out how to, because you can't dictate eight people what to do. They either have to come together as a team or they don't. Is, you gotta say, okay, the board's going to behave the way it's going to behave until it gets better. So don't put five, seven items on an agenda. Because all you've done is you've, you've thought you went through it, but you really didn't. And then the next time it comes back, this thing breaks out. Wait a minute, didn't this happen? What did we decide to do?
Peter, if you say the board's going to behave the way they behave because that's the way they behave, that's like saying we're having a discussion without a motion. So if we say that we as a board have to be more disciplined in our, in our discussions, then we have to take some action and say, we will try to abide by the time because we will allow everybody one or two questions and, you know, whatever. And trying, it, it might be false, it might be, but you need some framework to help, to help them be disciplined.
I agree with you, but I guess I'm just saying team development.
Yes.
Right? What, you, you have to start out with the players you have. Okay? And then you hope over time, you can get the team to gel and the players to develop different behaviors.
But you gotta tell them what color the gel is.
But, but yes, but the point I was trying to make is, you don't, in my experience, you don't get a team just to magically change because somebody on high dictating.
I, I agree. But I'm an effort.
So it's a, it's a, it's kind of a progression is the way I'm saying. But to Kate Tom's point, I mean, you're actually calling the question, which is the critical question. Would you, guys, if we're going to try to put, you know, three pounds of stuff in a 10 pound bag, and we do it year after year? We're going to keep having this conversation. It's going to be like grandma all day. So we have to, it's us that has to have this discipline. Because the administration's going to react to whatever we tell them to do.
See, you know, most agendas will say, action items are discussion items. And so if it's an action item, my expectation as a board member would be, is there a recommended motion to go along with the presentation, the discussion? And then we may change, we may change it, we may amend it, we may pass it, we may cancel it. But it's an action item and the action requested is on the agenda. And if it's a discussion item, I think that's something where you may not limit the board conversation. Because if you're going to make a decision at some point, you want your questions answered. But you sure can limit the presentation line. That's a start. So you could say, you know, working with the superintendent, we need 10 minutes. You know, it would be material, but the synopsis of that presentation is going to be 10 minutes. The first time it goes to 12 minutes, Ralph talks to the person offline, the person finds out she went over. I expect 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 10 minutes. And Peter as chair could say, you know, we're, we're approaching the 10 minute limit. Or we've just gone over, could you summarize? And we stick to that. We can't control, you, you're right, you can't control you. Well, you can, but that's another conversation. But what you can do is limit the things on the agenda to, if it's an action item, it's an action item. If it's a discussion item, we can to some way say, we're going to allow 15 minutes or a half hour. And if there's no action anyway, then we can say, we could continue this when it comes up for a vote. So I think those are a couple of things you can do procedurally. I mean, I was asked by a district not far from here to review four of their meetings. They all went past midnight. And I watched, well, I fast forward, it'll happen because. And their question was, what can we do to shorten our meetings? Because they were all going on past midnight. And the first thing was an observation, you have way too much stuff on the agenda. Including a lot of stuff that didn't need to be on the agenda. Because that's the other thing you can start questioning all the time. Did we really need to have this on a business meeting agenda? Or was there another way of having this conversation, maybe through subcommittee? But then the second part was, they like to talk. And so, and we are arranging a meeting with them, like, you know, self-evaluation basically, to talk about how they can sort of structure their meetings with meeting norms to say, you know, we'll go around once, or we'll allow everybody a few minutes to ask questions. But when the chair starts to recognize people are repeating themselves and repeating themselves, if I can't get somebody to say something different, could we, somebody call the question? Or can I ask for, are we ready to vote? And to discipline ourselves. Why can't we go that way? Jennifer?
Something you said is very intriguing. So are, the motions we usually get on our cover sheets are accept the report. So are you saying that the board should formulate a motion on the cover sheet that takes action beyond accepting a report? But it says?
Our cover sheet says that they're supposed to say, if they have new initiative or something like that, that that's supposed to be put on, right? I mean, put on the cover sheet and that's what we're accepting.
Yeah, I'm saying, let's move beyond accepting that.
Well, you accept a report, but then the thing is that there's an initiative or request for this, that or the other thing, then that's what we vote on. Not to accept, but for, to, for against, whatever. So that is a.
If we really want to put a motor and eight cylinders behind the board, that motion would be skillfully crafted to do more than accept the report. It would say, and the board wishes to take the following actions over the next, next time period.
No, it's.
If we are writing a motion to you, because that's what you have, right? What action are we asking for you to take? It's not for us to tell you what you're asking for.
Right, no, it's not.
So to like, I'll use the textbooks as an example. We are seeking favorable approval and adoption of that textbook. So then as a board, you take action to approve, accept or not. And tell us to go actually to the right board.
Yeah, I mean, it's right about that.
No, I get that, but there are other kinds of agenda items.
Yes, sir.
Sure. Where the board could formulate a very action oriented objective and put it on the cover sheet. And I'm thinking of strategic plan updates. I'm thinking of other agenda items like that.
And maybe even the concept of a discussion one month and then the vote the next month. I'd be pretty, like, something like the book thing. Why it couldn't come to us and vote or recommend?
Policy dictates two, I think both.
Or why does policy dictate that?
Because you don't want to make a decision without, because if there's questions, then you're forced to make a decision without the opportunity to find out the answers to your question.
He also didn't have to do for public comment.
Yes.
What I also, I also.
I'm not saying that neither of those happened. Because we have this whole long discussion. And then a month later, we forgot about it. And we asked some of the same questions all over again for the same topic.
So one, one thing we could do is identify things that are discussion items that are going to come back for a vote as, does everybody agree this could be a consent agenda item?
Yeah, that's a good.
Well, we do do consent. I was, but the point of what Jennifer's, what Jennifer was saying, what Lauren was saying is, I, I think I mean's right. They have to give us a base motion. And then do the base motion on there. Then your point is, is if there's a discussion, a consensus develops, how do you supplement that motion? Right? And the place we tend to get stuck is, um, or, you know, we seem to have never solved this. And I now appreciate the genius of the work session versus the regular meeting. I, I hated it before. But what it would do is, you know, Peter used to always bring up this issue of, when I'm accepting the report, what am I accepting? And the real issue is, is by the way, we have to realize as a board, we're accepting everything that's in that report. Right? So if we don't like it that way, that accepting the report is accepting everything in the report, somebody needs to mechanically go figure out how to change that. So that's issue number one. Hold on one second, Barbara. The second one was, on some of these media reports, right? Like, we've decided to consolidate stuff. You might remember I never wanted to do a STEM report. Because it's like, there's all this math and then there's all this science. And then what we try to do is we try and shoemote it all into one meeting. And it's so broad to talk about. Everybody's got their thing they want to talk about. So we never move through those conversations cleanly. So it seems to me there's two choices here. Break this thing up into more bite sized chunks. Like, I was stunned, I think, I think there was, I counted it as like 450 pages of reading.
A tabloid report took us over the end of the page.
Okay. But my point is, we either need to break this up into bite sized chunks. Right? Or we need to realize we're going to, we're going to eat the elephant at one sitting. But we better lead enough time then to be able to eat the elephant at one sitting. We gotta do one or the other. This thing of short time, not enough discussion, and, but it's a big item, that's not working for us.
So, so two comments. But I think we try to settle this and then we now have a, a, a good template for the new, the monitoring reports and shorter and to the point. And if they don't get it, it actually says in the policy, we send it back to them and tell them we do it. The other thing we did also say was that on the cover, as I'm repeating myself, it should say, we want approval for this new initiative. Or we want approval to spend X amount of money or whatever. Or even if they didn't want it then, they were to project it so we would have an idea for the, for the budget. Now, maybe we need to make that more explicit on the, on the cover sheet so everybody gets the message. But I think we also need to have some discipline and say, look at this report. Been around like you a long time. This report's not meeting this template, giving us the information we need.
Please, yes.
Then we, we shouldn't, we shouldn't bother with it. We shouldn't waste our time.
Until it's done, until it's right.
Until I, until the template's right. It has four, five.
The superintendent also has a role to play. It should never be added to the agenda if it's not following the format, right?
I want to, I want to give Kate Tom a chance because she's had her stand up there for quite a while.
I was actually going back to what Jennifer was saying before. And the question I had was, you know, how do you get a motion, that's a board motion on the front, if you're not having two discussions? So we go back to having a lot of our meetings that have discussions.
I, I wasn't advocating to not have two. There are things that don't need to.
Jennifer was talking about, you know, creating a motion, it's a board motion that you sort of put on the front, that is sort of our goal. But practically speaking, I'm not sure how you get there. I mean, how do you sort of do that without sort of, you know, meeting where everybody's calling each other and thinking a thing? I mean, that's, then we're not having an eight person discussion about it. I think that, you know, ends up.
Well, but I think in most cases, the superintendent is, has put the presentation together, has the program lined up so that their presentation to you explains what they want to do, how they're going to do it.
From the administration side.
So, but I see the administration writing in the recommended motion.
Yeah, no, that part I agree.
Yeah.
It was just, I mean, Jennifer was saying, how about the next level of the board sort of having a motion that's maybe more in depth or, or has more information? And that's where I sort of am not clear, how do you be able to put that on the cover sheet? Because if you haven't seen it yet, you haven't discussed it, how do you create that? I mean, I love the idea of being more specific in terms of what we do. And I'm sort of writing down, we have a sense of, sense of the meeting. I love the idea of like, we've seen this, even though it's coming back. Can we agree that, you know, sense of the meeting, if this can go on the consent agenda? I think that's a great way to do part of it. But I didn't quite understand practically, how do we create a board motion for something we haven't seen yet?
It needs to be.
Yeah.
I'm going to dissent a little bit. To me, I don't care so much about the template. I mean, if you, if you have questions because the template wasn't filled out, I get that. It's frustrating, I get that. But to me, that's like a government office, did you fill out the form probably? I really don't care if you filled out the form.
I don't think that's what Barbara's.
No, but she's saying, do all the information in the first go. Then you won't generate all these additional questions. It's all in the first go.
Well, it's not just that, Jennifer, but we're reading all this consecutively. And I, I've mentioned to somebody, now we have that Saturday and Sunday after it's posted before the Thursday. And you're looking for information in place and it's not there. And then you're like, okay. It just makes it so much harder because I'm reading them back to back. And maybe I'm the one who's getting that.
You don't want Easter egg hunt every weekend? You don't want an Easter egg hunt every weekend?
But I need to. Let's have a hypothetical situation, okay? Ex-direct, direct reporter Ralph, does the template 100% correct? Absolutely, A and plus, okay? Everything's penetrant. That doesn't get to my point, which is, okay, so we're doing abysmally on math at the elementary level and making this up. That's not the case. That's absolutely not the case.
Hypothetical.
Okay, so it's in the template, has all the right data, says the budget projection. I don't care. It's, what do we do with that?
That's in the template.
It is.
I mean, I, I hear Jennifer's point, I think, that you each are going to have a different comfort level on what information you need to make a decision. And, you know, it might be, and if we follow the template theoretically at least, the data that we would expect to see is going to be there because it's prescribed ahead of time. This is the kind of stuff we're looking for. Now, if I get a report from the administration with a recommendation for action, I might be more like Jennifer and say, well, this meets all the criteria I need to make this decision. Or it's raising questions, it's a part of that conversation, don't you? But Barbara might say, you know what? What I really needed was this. What I really needed was this component that would have been there if the template had been followed and I need that bit of data. In other words, she might look at it and say...
Yeah, I get that. That's okay with me. But, so I'm going to accept the report with the knowledge that we're not doing well at elementary math and everything's in that report that I need to know. That's not satisfying to me.
Well, I guess the question I would go back to, because not every board votes to accept every report. It's a receive and file. If there's no other questions, we'll go to the next item on the agenda and boards will actually vote to accept them. So I guess my question to you all would be, by voting to accept the report, what is that doing? Is it in essence validating the report? Is it...
Yeah, so this is the question I've been asked for six years, Peter, right? I've been, didn't like broke the record. So are there reports we are legally obligated to accept? Or is it just we are legally obligated to get that report every year? Dr. Francis.
I have, I'm sorry, I emailed you about this. I have been trying to figure out, are there required reports? And I spoke to people at CAE and I spoke to two people in the CDU, whatever, Department of Education, I talked with somebody in the legal department, and there was a lot of like kind of talk, but it doesn't, it seems like there is next to nothing as far as reports go that we were required to have given to us. I think specifically asked, are we then required to accept them? Because if we're not required to see them, it's hard to imagine we're required to accept them. So I did write down here for myself, what is rule to vote to accept reports? To understand that. But I put in some effort and it seems to me that there is next to nothing that's required at the statutory level that we have to have presented.
But Kate, that's not why, that's not the genesis of that. The genesis of this, which is by the way, there are some we have to do. Food certification and there's certain ones we have to do, but there's not many. The genesis of this was, it was in a policy construct, policy governance. And we've thrown most of that away. But the value of accepting the report is as much for the board as it is for the administration. Because what it says is, it's the board acknowledging, I've seen your report, I understand what's in it, so that they can, administrator in any area can walk away with confidence and say, okay, what was in here? I told them what we're doing. I told them what we're going to do, right? I've given them the update and they've taken action and they accepted it. So now it's like, you know, go forth to my son and prosper. Go forth to my daughter and prosper, right? Because it's accepted. So it was a way to create a deliberate interlock. It also avoids the scenario where someone says later, well, we didn't agree to that. And it's like, well, wait a minute, we voted on it and we accepted it. It creates the problem however, that if they give you a 200-page report, it's the responsibility of the board member to go through and say, crap, I just approved all 200 pages. And I may have approved a footnote that I didn't know about. So Peter's remedy to that was, why don't we make the administrators take out anything where they're acting for an action approval? A pilot, an initiative, certification, or whatever. And, because I don't want to go hunt for it, Easter egg hunt for it in the 200 pages. Ask the administrators to say, oh, by the way, you approved my report, but also here were the actions I asked you for your... It's not even an approval, it's like an endorsement. It wasn't a bad idea because it made it explicit, but you guys can go and think about policy variance if you want to recommend just changing that whole thing. But it had a decent rationale to it and it's not a bad idea.
In essence, what I think I'm hearing you say is that the board's approval of this report would be more of an approval of some actions related to it versus just acknowledgement of data.
Exactly, that's exactly...
It's both. It's been serving the purpose of both. The question is, should? Right? Because not every report is either going to have any recommended action and not every report is required, so we don't need to accept them. It's just a report out to the board.
We need to ask administrators because what did they get out of our approval? If they get the approval, do they go away and say, okay, those guys agreed to everything that was in the report? Or they're going, I don't know whether I have their endorsement or not. What do the administrators want?
So you should bring up an example, because I wasn't here, but I watched it on video. And so the re-envisioning the high school, that came up as a discussion and almost every person was surprised by that.
Yes.
And I think the answer was, Irene said, it was in the report under something or other, whatever, right?
Oh, the high school, I don't remember.
Yeah. So I don't know if that, because I didn't pay attention to it that much, whether that was a new envision or what, but it seemed to me that it must have been something because it came back as a discussion and everybody was sort of like, oh, I don't remember that, or what does that mean, or whatever. So maybe that's one of those things that needed to be uncovered? And so maybe we need to be more careful about it.
Irene, can we get your perspective? Because you write so many, at least so many of the reports come from your area. So maybe a little perspective is true.
Sure. I think, Lauren, we were, is it E001? And I know that's a former policy under PGC. Maybe you don't know that.
Whole student development.
Yes, so I think the policy that we stated is that you were accepting receipt of report and that the program is being implemented per the guidelines of the board and per the statute. Again, that was under E001. So we kind of operate still in that because again, you confer the diplomas. We need to assure you that the programs are being implemented per your right to confer those diplomas. If there's a pre-K-12 continuing of teaching and learning and that the students have access to these programs. And I do think policy 6180 with the new template and the questions we have to answer that we want to answer, still does that for you and gives you that information. I've always seen it as that you're accepting acceptance or that you've received this report and that you trust us that we're implementing those courses in that pre-K-12.
But it's not a matter of trust, it's a matter of knowing. And I think it was knowing whether something is a new initiative or embellishment of something, or whatever of something, that the board needed to know. So maybe we just have to vote that we're accepting the information and B, very explicitly, there is no new initiatives in here, there is no request for money in here, there's whatever, and let that be upfront. And if there is, then we vote on that separately.
But Irene, it's too... That's great, right? So you're taking a very conservative, in your description, that's a very conservative view of accepting a report. But so frequently in the report, you know, to Barbara's point, right? So frequently, you'll use these reports to tell us what's coming or what you're going to propose, or what you're going to do in the future, right?
Which wasn't asked, that if something was going to come back and live in the budget process, we made sure that we...
Budget or not, the budget or not, you guys want to communicate to the board, hey, by the way, this is what I'm going to, this is what I've done and this is what I'm going to do next, right?
And that we were very intentional to put the word recommendations anywhere in the report. If we used recommendation, you wanted it on the cover sheet and you agreed.
So are you expecting, do you guys walk away from that? I mean, Irene, do you walk away from that, the whole student development or whatever it is? Do you walk away and go, uh, yeah, because they accepted that report and that was in there? I got their green light? Is that how you guys look at that? Or how do you look at us when we make an approval?
Well, if it's a clear recommendation and that you vote to approve, then I see that as an approval to go forward, right? But we're not making a recommendation and that you're accepting the report, that you're in acceptance and we're in line, aligned with each other with the implementation of these programs and goals that we've set.
And maybe, maybe the recommendation then should be, there's no change. Because I just whispered to Jennifer in her example of, we're doing really poorly and I don't want to accept that report. I rarely, do you guys feel like we get bad information, like we're doing poorly, like in anything? We should have that transparent conversation and say, I'm going to remedy it or there's no change, it's status quo.
Well, here's what, here's the thing that I think in my head, and maybe this is totally a bad assumption. We have a discussion, right, about, or let's say it's math, right? And the report, we all read the report, then we come in, we have a discussion, right? Invariably, two, three, four things pop out, right? And, you know, maybe one board member's picking on one thing, but maybe two or three board members are raising, they agree on an issue and then maybe four over here and then maybe five or all. So there's like, okay, if I'm sitting and Irene's here, I walk out of that room and I go, you know what, there seemed to be a consensus around this, this, and this, right? And I want more math training, or I'm picking an item, right, that's topical. Then we accept the report. The mistake I'm making is, I think we accepted the report and I'm like green, we're as group green-lighting to the administration. But I also walk out of assuming, yeah, they took all those comments in and they incorporated that too. I don't need to make that statement discreet. They took in all that feedback.
Peter, then maybe...
Maybe that's dangerous to do.
Right, maybe to solve, maybe to solve for that is, right, maybe to solve for that, the recommended motion is, even if the recommendations are listed above, the recommended motion is no longer just accept the report. The recommended motion is, accept the report with the following recommendations. And if we need to amend the motion to remove a recommendation, if you feel...
You go back to Jennifer's.
And you have to vote for more than, you know, July.
Just to put it in plain language, there should be a student achievement motion on every academic report, in my view, it's one person's view. Because otherwise, we're accepting the fact that we've acquired knowledge that we're in need of improvement in something, but the board hasn't signed off on when we're going to hear about it again, how we're going to improve. It's just unsatisfying.
Well, again, I think our new policy does address that.
Your new policy on like...
Sorry. Well, 618. I think there's 618 is in that, does talk about that. And I think the other piece, we're talking about having the data meeting in October. I started talking to Toby about 618. Tony, about it in terms of just reviewing for thoughts about the schedule. And one of the things we talked about is, you know, having goals. Are we doing the goals then? What are we doing the goals, what are we here, what, how does that happen? So that is a very specific part of the conversation we had in terms of making sure we understand, as you're asking, right, what are the goals, what are we doing about it? What is our plan? I mean, to have that clearly part of the conversation as well.
I don't know how to do this mechanically, but it sounds like we're all in similar places about what we're trying to do. Someone smarter than me has to figure out how to do that mechanically.
Well, I think as there, within your template, there ought to be something that says right on the cover page, these are any action that's required that is not already being done. In other words, it's either a validation of what's happening or it's planning on doing something else. Those recommendations ought to be listed and part of the motion. You know, that recommended motion ought to include anything that has to change so that there's a vote on that. So I think voting to accept the report is acknowledging, yeah, we saw it. Ultimately, that's really all you're saying is, yeah, we saw it. And, you know, like you get a policy, you know, some companies have policy manuals, you have to sign it to indicate you read it. I remember that's my old sand hoodie days, you know? We used to joke about it, you say names because nobody ever went back to check. But the concern I'm hearing is, what's going to be different? And the board should be voting on that. So I think part of that cover sheet should be anything that's going to be required, that's going to change something, ought to be listed. And again, if you have a recommended motion that says recommend acceptance of the report and the following actions, there's nothing to say that if, you know, Peter goes, can I have a motion? And someone could say, I'm going to make the following motion. And they could read 90% of that recommended motion, but change something. Because it doesn't mean it has to be verbatim as the recommended. And then someone's, you know, and I'm changing this part. I'm, you know, I'm making a motion that we do this new math initiative, but instead of reporting back in July, I want to report it back in June. Stupid example, but maybe some...
I think that's kind of, I think we function with that in terms of what we get from the administration. I think what might be more of an issue is that, you know, when we go around and take our terms commenting, you know, you might have one person who says, well, I really think X. And then nobody else comments on it. So is that something that the administration is supposed to act on? Or if it's just one person doing it? So I almost sort of feel like, you know, if there are things like that that are coming up and we're hearing more than one person, maybe it means us to make a note and say, okay, here are the four comments that seem to have really come up. Are any of these ones that we as a board want to act on, vote on, have a consensus, have something else? So that we're being more firm about it. Because I think it's, we often, I think, have circumstances, we come back the next year, later in the year and we're like, well, we talked about that. But there was actually no direction given and there was no consensus. And, you know, sometimes somebody says something and I disagree with it, but I kind of let it slide because I'm like, well, if only one person is saying it, I don't necessarily have to argue with it. But then there is some concern, well, then somebody might be listening to that and say, well, someone said it, so maybe that's what I should do.
But silence can't be acceptance. That's a very dangerous thing to run a decision-making organization.
I think we maybe need to be more deliberate. If we feel like there is an issue that's coming up that a number of us feels wrong about, that we need to make that next step of actually making it a motion. I mean, if we've talked about it, that's an action.
You know, one of the things I would say, just as a matter of course, if there's something in the report that you really don't agree with, I wish I could support this with a vote, but I can't because I don't agree with this. And then there's a choice, through the superintendent perhaps, you know, we could change that or we'll take that out, or one of you could say, you know what, I agree with you. I'm going to second your motion to amend the recommend, you know? So you can just sort of throw Robert Truel's into that a little bit and ultimately the vote should reflect where the majority of you believe it should be. And you could say, I don't agree with this, I'm going to make a motion to excise it. And the rest of you could say, no, I'm fine with it, I'm going to vote to keep it in. That's democracy. But it's formalized, which allows you to make sure that the final vote reflects what the board wants rather than what each individuals want.
But we have a lot, see, if we're going to go this way, the board won't work effectively. As an example, Ms. Ray may make a point on a particular issue, right? To be efficient, I may totally agree with her, but I'm not chiming in. I'm not saying, oh boy, I got to make sure that everybody knows that I agree with that. This is the slippery slope of this thing, Kate. I sit there and I go respectfully, and there may be one, Ms. Date, I may totally disagree with it. But I'm going to sit there and go, that's, I'm processing in my mind, that's important to her, okay? So I don't say anything because I'm not going to object, right? I only object if I say, I disagree, I don't think that's the right thing to do. But, because I don't, it's very problematic when you're editing your other colleagues. It's, that's not our job. You should edit when you feel strongly about it. But otherwise, if that's important to that person, respect them as a colleague if that's important.
But you see, and I don't disagree with that. But I guess the question in my mind is, at what point is an opinion different than recommending a change? Or endorsing a part of the report and saying, I'm going to vote for this because I believe this, is different than, I kind of like this or I kind of don't like that. There's not an expectation that it's going to change anything, I'm just voicing my opinion. Which is different than, this really needs to be changed because I don't think it's appropriate or I don't think it's accurate. That's when the board has to come to some sort of consensus.
What was the actual example? Because I think this is...
Yeah, we're very hypothetical.
Where you're going like a lot of circles. I mean, I tried to like make it more math personal or something. I mean, make a choice between, was it ST math and, what was the other one?
Dreambox.
Okay, you recommended both, right? But say for example, I was like, you know what, I see your research, I know it's not the case, but, and I totally disagree. I think we should go with Dreambox over ST math. And you might all, then say, make a motion, I make a motion, blah, blah. Two of you can say, you know what, I look at the data and I agree with you.
Okay, the way I would react to that right now, I would sit there and I would go, gee, Kathleen's got a point, right? And Kathleen is making this point directly to my group, right, in that scenario. And I'm, I don't feel like I need to, ooh, I totally agree with what you're saying. What I do need to do is actively object if I think what you're suggesting is wrong. That's what I'm doing.
But what if I make it an amendment to say, I think, you know, I only want ST math going forward?
Then there's a vote.
And then it's a vote. And then it's right to the meeting, it's that's on time. Like then I would do that and you could say...
Well, it depends, it's like, I don't think you can make everything mechanical.
No, that's right, that's right. And that's why I'm going to think of like a real, sorry, hard...
Before you do that, you...
Who is the person who makes the decision? Are you arguing about that there's life? Or are you arguing about it, true versus a lie? Yeah, so I worry a little bit about that.
That's true.
Because quite frankly, I'm not sure that we should be debating XT math versus something else.
I just want to call something concrete, give me a...
I understand that.
But that's a really good option.
My point is to say, you've charged me with increasing math achievement. In my role as the professional who understands math, I'm making these recommendations because you've charged me with this, let there be light. I'm not sure, somebody needs to say, whoa, 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 I think we're arguing about incandescent versus something, whoa.
Yeah, that's true.
We need to back off and say, are we trusting that you are moving forward, letting there be light?
Right.
And I don't remember whose goal that is.
I'll give you another really good example where this just happened. At the last meeting, Peter and I were both on the issue with Lori on, on transfers. Okay, by the way, I can look around the room. Nobody was objecting to that. And I'm pretty certain there were at least six people sitting at that table.
Oh, I objected. And I'm annoyed it didn't make the paper. Because, I totally, I'm on the one I said, it's a, it's a lot of 10,000 to get to something interesting. We had a vote.
No, it wasn't up to 10,000. We were talking about in general, we have to get to a place where we plan the budget so there are not as many transfers.
Oh, okay, okay.
And what was interesting is, I was really interested, because you're a CFO, I was like, hmm, that's interesting, she's not saying anything. And, but I could look around the table and you were over there, you weren't saying anything. Jennifer was over there going.
Hi, Jennifer.
Okay. But my point is, is that didn't rise to the point of an actual motion. But there was a clear consensus of, hey, those two are running around making this point, and I don't need to pile on, but I don't.
Or did you what were that? Sorry.
That's a good question, a great question.
Transfers, um.
No, not transfers.
Yeah, I actually commented, it was transfers, right?
Right, but I'm not specific to the transition, it was just how we plan.
How we plan, I think you did comment.
Right, I think I commented, because that is so hard.
Yeah, it's super difficult.
And we're always going to have, um, transfers, especially when we have, you know, two account codes that are practically the same. And it's, I think that was my response.
But it, but I think as a board, the obligation is, unless there is a vote, the status quo remains.
Right, right.
That you may all agree that something should change, but if somebody doesn't make a motion to change it, and it's voted on, and then maybe some potential things have to take place. It doesn't change. That's, you know, the message can't be that the administration has to sit quietly and take notes and say, okay, I think I know what most of the people want, and I'm going to do it. Nothing changes unless there's a vote.
Yep, yeah.
I think that's got to be critical.
Yeah, because otherwise, there's a lot of no making.
When you say nothing changes unless there's a vote, maybe that's to Mary's point, that we are charged to uphold a strategic plan and make this work happen. Does that mean that every little change, okay, because.
I, I think if it rises to the level of coming to the board.
The subject changes, we've put like textbooks, we've brought that forward now.
That's they want, yeah.
Right, right, they never, they didn't used to come to the board, but we said, no, they have to. Of course, a study has to come to the board, they need to see that continuum. But if I'm going to make a change in a particular school and putting their grade, growing professional work, because in the moment, their evidence shows.
No, no, no.
Because that does come through as those academic boards.
But you should read, you should read the policies that have been passed on curriculum.
Ah, so, yes.
Because, and, and the student ones, because there are things in there that you need to report to the board.
Absolutely.
There's lots of things that haven't been reported to the board in the past that need to be reported, not just in curriculum, but in other areas. So those policies have been passed and the board people, including all of us, to start doing Friday or something like that.
Back to the, you know, we want light and candle versus light bulb. And the trust thing, I wanted to see like the, um, the data that says that you picked the light bulb.
That's right.
And it's making a difference. So then I'm questioning, well, should she have picked the candle?
See, my reaction to Mary's, Mary's statement is, uh, I am going to tell you, I, let there be light. But then if you tell me what it is, how you're going to do it, and you tell me, I, I'm not going to tell you it's candle versus light bulb. But I will tell you, I don't want candles and light bulbs, pick one. So that's the kind of feedback that in your example, that I think the board should be given. Because I, I, I don't know whether Dream Box versus what's the other. ST math, I don't know which one's better, okay? That, I, I wouldn't even venture into that. But what I would read as a board member, I would be thinking, it would process in my head, strategic plan, consistent implementation. I've just heard complications. I'm going to give you feedback of, I'm hearing complication, I want you to simplify. Or I would like to see simplicity, right? But picking what that is, I, I agree, I don't think that's a, I mean, I realize it's a legal rule we have. But my point is, I'm going to take your recommendation on the action. But if you come forward and say, well, I'm going to have three because the administration couldn't decide, then I'm going to be, whoa. That doesn't sound right to me.
Right. And so I can go on, Dr. E, ST math is for K2 and Dream Box is for.
Well, okay, right.
This is very evident that we brought forward this.
But as part of your role as the board, the question is, let's make sure we agree what the problem is. You've shared with us your solution. Please explain to us how it is the best solution possible. What should we expect? If it's done with fidelity, what should happen next? And when will we get reports to validate or maybe make some mid-course corrections? You know, at the end of the year, six months, whatever it is, we will get a report back giving us the status. And part of our question upfront is, how will you know if we're being successful or not? What kind of assessments are you going to use? We're not approving them, but we want to know that you're keeping an eye on it and that at the appropriate time to come back and give us feedback. Is it working like we expected to or not? And if not, what are we doing to improve it? Not, what do we try next? Uh, that, we're often trying to get rid of something before we've really worked through. So, um.
If that were to happen, that would be great.
Yeah, that sounds like so like logical. And I, I'm going to go back to the teaching.
Because it's, oh, good.
So.
Yeah, we have one quick item to do, and then you can consolidate.
Well, I, I'm afraid consolidation might be a little bit of an issue even at this point. Because we had an easy hour if we consolidated. And I'm, I'm not sure I have the heat strength to, to do it tonight, to be honest with you, but.
Okay. There is one, one thing in here, if you're trying to move on, that, um, I wasn't. We seem to skip over 31. And then, I don't know who wrote this. Maybe somebody wants to say, maybe the person who wrote this. Any different from the superintendents to comment, totally do not like exclusive relationship between the board chair and the superintendent? And then the next one that goes with that is, I don't think individuals try to under properly guide, but I don't think there's always a good job of coming to clear consensus.
I did too.
And that seemed to go with, I don't, the scores in, in 31, kind of? And I guess 32.
I wrote, I wrote number one, the two, the way you, right now that you keep whispering, like, I, I just, it is so distracting, the, the two of you. So I'm just going to say, that's what I'm reacting to.
Okay, fair enough. Right, I mean, I don't, so I just didn't know what was going on here, I mean.
Well, I think part of the conversation we just finished gets to that issue of, does the board take the time to reach consensus on things? Or do you have the conversation and let it go and assume people know what's going to happen next? Or that there's, there's an understanding of what consensus means or not? Um, I think sort of, I think these were institutionalizing the decision-making process. But in those reports, if you are then voting on specific actions, rather than implying them through the acceptance of the report, that that would go a long way. And I think it's fair for the administration to say, in the absence of a direct motion, you know what? I'm not sure that's what the intention was, we're not going forward until we get clarification. I think that's very appropriate for administration to do when necessary, to say, we weren't clear enough on the consensus or the, you know? And that's why having the motion, second et cetera, is an important thing. Because part of Peter's job is, okay, there's a motion on the floor. If it passes, this is what it means, if it fails, this is what it means. And then there's clarity to that. And if we don't agree before we vote, we make sure we have an understanding of it. Do we all agree that's what we're voting on? Yes. And then, so we have consensus on what the motion is before we actually vote.
And, well, I, I understand what happens in a board, right? But this is, the board provides direction to the superintendent as a whole and not from individual board members. The only way it could happen is individual board members, if it's happening offline.
Correct.
Okay. So this is an event, we just spent a lot of time talking about what's going to happen inside a board meeting. It seemed to me this, this one, I mean, I don't know why it all had threes and twos. I mean, those are kind of, there were five people who gave it below average score, right? And then you have this comment over here, which is kind of illuminating, and they seem to go together. I, I, I'll tell you, I mean, I've been through a lot of board chairs and vice chairs. I, I don't know what conversations are going, I know they go on, they must go on, you're planning on whatever. I have no idea what those conversations are. So I, I never get, I, and different people handle it different ways. Different people have talked to individual board members, other people have passed it on in the caucus, other people write a note. And they say, hey, by the way, I talked to the superintendent, here's what we talked about. I, I have no, it's interesting he raised it as an issue of the exclusive relationship. Because I, I don't even know, I don't even know what happens, I have no idea. I'm totally in the dark. And then you come over here and the superintendent as a whole not committed to the board. I have no idea what to do as a board member, if you're even telling the superintendent.
And this may be perception versus reality.
Well, we obviously, it could be, but we obviously all think it's enough of a problem.
That it's been identified. About two weeks ago, the, uh, CAG provides for board chairs on this server so that they can raise questions, answer questions. And a week or so ago, I put out a question that board chairs asking, what kind of conversations, I have to make sure you're on there.
I'm on.
I apologize. But the question was, um, what interaction does the chair have with the superintendent? You know, how many hours a week, for instance, do you meet in person? Do you spend X amount of time on the phone? How do you create agendas? Just trying to get a sense as a state, what the common norms are for the board chair, superintendent, interaction with each other. And, um, that's a lot of variety in the responses. And I'll, I'll make sure tomorrow that you get on the list. But, um, the point being, there's two kinds of different questions. One would be, what's the interaction between the chair and the superintendent? And that can be all over the place. But the other thing is, do board members feel comfortable just calling Ralph and saying, hey, you know, we have a problem with such and such school? We really need to deal with it. Is his response, no problem, I'll take care of it, or is, look, we'll put it on the agenda and we'll have a conversation.
It's interesting, because we've had supers who have different takes on this. There are supers that don't want to meet individually with board members.
Which is bizarre.
Right, which was really, really strange to a lot of us. And then there are people that seek that out with regular communication. I think a lot of it also comes down to how frequently are they communicating, what are they communicating about? If it's only bad news all the time, that might not be the best communication.
I mean, in fairness, I think having a strong relationship between the board chair and the superintendent is very important.
Can I ask a question? Do, do you two meet with Ralph before each meeting?
No, once a month.
Yeah, we do chair meetings either once or twice a month, depending on the.
Okay, so when you do them, when you do them, the purpose of that meeting is.
Agenda.
Is a agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't call Ralph at all.
Okay.
I don't call him. I did call him when there were kids getting off the bus in the middle of time management.
Right, you need an order.
As I ran out to help them.
So, so what's funny is, you guys talk to him once, once a month? Okay, when you do that, how do you communicate what came out of that meeting?
You see the agenda.
I hold a caucus if people can get together. We didn't achieve that in May and June, because people were very, very busy at the end of the year.
And you go in and you say, hey, here's what happened, right?
We have a caucus, we talk about what's on the agenda, why is it on the agenda, what's on the next agenda, you know, all that.
But if we've done agenda planning, what are you planning in a monthly meeting?
If something's going to get moved, if something's going to get added. When we do our agenda planning at the end of the meeting, there'll be a discussion and there might be an item that we're going to put a place for, how to balance it.
What Gaitan and I used to also do is, and we inherited this from Laura. Laura and, who was that, Barbara? Was it Laura Barber? I forget who it was. Doesn't matter, not important. What we would do with Jill, because she was new, is we'd go in and he would show us a report. So we would say, oh, here's what everybody's, by the way, here's what everybody wants to talk about, right? Because we would get that from you guys, what's on your mind. And if the report wasn't ready, it wasn't going to hit the mark, that was the place we said.
Oh, no, no, we don't get.
Hold on. If it wasn't going to hit the mark, we would say, you got to move that because you're going to waste the board's time.
We see the agenda way before we see the reports.
Yeah, I understand that part.
Or we're, we're told the report's not going to be ready, why should we put that?
But maybe that problem doesn't exist anymore because when, I guess that was when Sal was here, they were consistently delivering stuff late. So, um.
I think the only time we've really had to move stuff because things weren't ready was when the state didn't release the achievement data.
See, when I look at this question, I don't see that kind of issue much as the superintendent working for a process rather than one. And I, I'm not seeing any action from the superintendent. Like, usually you see either frown, grits, or laugh, nervous laugh sometimes. But, you know, if it's, if it's happening, that would have come up in the conversation already at some point or another. I mean, I had, I had a superintendent come call me and say, my board chair shows up, you know, she has a kid in the school, and she'll show up at my office almost daily for an hour or two. And it makes me crazy. And, you know, but, and this often happens with new superintendents who are kind of unsure of how much they should push back. But it's like, well, you have to say, if you want to come in once a week or once every other week, let's set a regular appointment for Thursday afternoon or something. But to put some structure around it, you can't allow, and, or it could be just any board member picking up the phone saying, I need you to do something. And, you know, it takes a certain level of comfort to say, I can't, or I'm sorry, but that's got to be something that has to go back through the board. But I don't get a sense about this, you know, he's not going to sit there and go, oh, shoot, I really shouldn't, but, okay. You know, he's going to tell you what you need to hear.
Ralph, where do you, how do you, when you need to know what the board wants to do, how do you figure that out? On a line up? That the board doesn't get discussed? Well, that's what the board needs, but.
Yeah, I don't get the question either. I don't, I don't get what you're asking. I mean.
Uh, superintendent, maybe Ralph doesn't have this problem. Other superintendents that have to say, uh, where's the board going to be on this? What are they going to be looking for? Laura, you should talk to me about this problem all the time.
I, I think I had that issue back in November, budget wise.
Right.
What's the board looking for? And I proposed a budget and I got clear directions from the board about that, and that's where we were going.
But we also had a committee meeting where we talked about it too.
And so I don't know why this is a story.
And that's what it is. And it should have happened.
And there's a lot of mechanisms for you to interact with board members, through committee meetings, through other just general interactions with them.
My part was the whispering, that you had to.
Oh, we're like two school kids, I'll admit that.
And it was really bothering me at the last meeting, and I filled this out right after that. So was Avery.
You want to come sit between us?
No, it's just, it's a bad, it's not a good habit.
Okay, so, um, we've talked about a lot of stuff. I got a sense that there were a couple of things that, you know, back to Barbara's point, so what? That there is, it seems to be a consensus that the board wants to go ahead in some fashion with goal setting, uh, district goal setting. Um, I think there needs to be some conversation about where the process that fits in. Is it after the strategic plan? Is that too far away? Do we want to do something for this year? I think that needs a little more fleshing out to decide how you want to do that. But I get a real clear sense that the board wants that. With alignment to the strategic plan and the vision, um, that within the presentation format, that having some sort of document that sort of summarizes and then makes more clear particular actions that would come.
I thought that was the.
That item is a one major communication.
A picture of the outside world.
Yeah.
Correct, you're right. So that's kind of like a, I hate to say publication or a public relations tool, but that's kind of what we're talking about.
Talking points.
Yeah, talking points. A review and or some way of taking action annually on the code of ethics so that it's real, it's out the front, people are hotness of it. Um, and then some real conversation about how you would approach the agenda, especially about the reports, to make sure that it's very clear if action is required, that that's really put out there and that the board does make sure that the action is taken. Rather than assuming it's within the, within the structure of the review or accepting the report, but rather if there's real action required, that that's pulled out and becomes an action item. Is that?
Yeah.
Synopsis of everything?
I, I think that last item, it's got a lot of moving parts on it, it's one we struggled with before. I think that if I wasn't wrong, the takeaway is somebody needs to fly over that target again. I think that if I wasn't wrong, the takeaway is somebody needs to fly over that target again. Because we got the report template, and then we talked about this thing of what should be in this motion thing on the front, how should a motion be done, how do we render explicit, how do we make sure as a board we're, we're speaking up so that we can figure out if it's really a consensus, right?
It's not exactly an efficiency issue, but I was sort of thinking that as, you know, we had sort of said PGC was gonna try and tackle the, how do we make ourselves more effective and efficient?
Good, how about it?
So, I know...
Let me know how I can help you.
It's a challenge, but I was sort of...
We're gonna turn our microphone off, we'll start...
I think I might fit into that a little bit.
Well, I think it's, it's fair to also kind of just sort of analyze your meetings. And if there are areas that it just is obvious that either we're talking too much, or we've spent a lot of time on an issue, and it didn't move the ball forward any.
We need to get a force, maybe it's...
So, Gettin' just suggested something, and we all didn't...
We signed out.
And so the react, the suggestion, I believe, was that PGC was gonna try and look at the efficiency of meetings. I totally disagree. I think PGC has got more work than whatever. I think if you who some other people list up to the plate and, and come up with some ideas and bring them back to the board about how it can be efficient. I mean, we take it on, anything anybody else doesn't wanna do, we take it on. And you know me, I'm not a... But I don't wanna see policy moving forward.
What is the strategic plan here?
Yes, give it to that committee. Give it to that committee. I don't accept it that committee.
Well, I get, one of the questions I would have is, Peter is chair, having heard this conversation, are there things that you as chair, in your meeting with Jennifer and Ralph, in terms of setting agendas, to incorporate what you've heard to maybe start by shaping the agenda process to include some of this stuff?
Works actually under way at PGC. And it'll come to the board at the June 13th meeting.
But that's, but Barbara's right, I mean, you're right too. Our, our policy is, is that we don't, the, the board chair, and we have a board chair and then we have this executive committee. The executive committee doesn't really have any powers. The board chair really doesn't have any powers either. The job is, is be the spokesperson for the board, affect the meeting, sign instruments, do the agenda planning.
And get served for the papers if the board gets...
Right, okay, but we don't have this like Uber thing. But my point is, is kind of, the executive committee is supposed to be figuring out how to run the board. So, I agree with you, Barbara, and no offense, but, you know, dropping it off on PGC is probably not the right place. This is the job for the executive committee to figure out.
That's a good point, I hadn't thought of that.
And they might, I mean, it may...
If others are involved, then get others involved.
Right.
I mean, it might start with a couple simpler changes, and then, you know, people can recommend, once you start seeing changes implemented, then you can start funneling other ideas in.
That actually makes a lot of sense, Peter, because the people who are setting the agenda with Ralph and those two...
It actually, our policy does not say that that's the role of the executive committee.
No, it doesn't say that's the role, I agree with you, Peter, it doesn't formally say that, but given that the fact that the board leadership is supposed to figure out how to run efficient meetings and the agenda, it seems that it would be logical if you guys, those two things seem connected.
That's fine.
If you don't like it...
I was worried there would be criticism, "Oh, what are they doing over there? What are they doing in that long, why are they talking about it?" I don't know what he thinks about what they're doing.
Well, Ray's gonna come up with a suggestion.
Whatever, I, I don't, I... Nobody's gonna be eye on that deal. If, if we had your time, we could probably spend about a half hour creating some meeting norms that would start that process, but again, it's already 9:30.
And we have, we actually have, besides, like, we have one other item on our agenda that we do wanna get to. Which is? Which is a superintendent evaluation, because we do a public report and a vet, we met. So, we'll close out the first item, you're good?
I would assume it was in it before that on the next meeting.
We actually put it on the agenda for tonight, because in the next meeting, we're gonna use recognition. There'll be a number. So, just, just for the record, the board met tonight with Mr. Mayo, an executive session, for the purpose of conducting an evaluation for the 2018-2019 school year. As our interim superintendent, we discussed some of the things that happened this year, some of the unknowns, such as the JC roof project, the water damage, you know, and basically your, your commitment to our students and our teachers and our community. So, I think the board would like to thank you for your year. We'll probably say some nice things about you at the next meeting, but I just wanted to take this opportunity now to say that we did have a nice discussion, it's been a very good year, and thank you for everything you've done. And you might say some nice things at the next meeting. All right, so with that, I think, Dr. Francis, did you have something you wanted to say? Yes, Dr. Francis?
I am with yours.
All those in favor? I'll second that word.